All right, now that it's 6 o'clock, I'd like to call to order the Van... Town of Van Buren zoning and planning board meeting for November 12, 2024. Can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to defy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on nation, on your God, in the judicial, delivering the need of justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ms. McMahon?
Here.
Mr. Virginia? Mr. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Mr. Bose?
Yep.
Mr. Schausenbach?
Here.
Mr. Budash?
Here.
Just to take a moment here, I want to introduce Tom Fugia, who is our new deputy codes officer, who began, I think, 10 days ago now?
12.
12 days. I was counting. So we want to welcome you to the Town of Van Buren. He'll be sitting at, you know, all these meetings moving forward. He's working with Tim on, you know, passing along the applications, reviewing, obviously, the applications, so he'll be a familiar face in the codes office when anyone comes in, so welcome, Tom. So, October 8th, meeting minutes, they were sent via email. I sent them again earlier this afternoon or later this afternoon, I don't know when it was. The only thing I had was the date, and they were put out in the original email as a September meeting minute, so if anybody didn't catch that, that's why I really wanted to send it. I had no issues with the minutes. Does anybody else have any comments or issues with the minutes as I stand? Chair entertain a motion to approve the October 8th, 2024, meeting minutes.
So move.
Second.
Hearing first and second, any comments? Hearing no comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Approve. All right, first order of business is a public hearing for Hazza Foods, 2220 Downer Street, tax map ID number 033.1-04-02.2. Chair entertain a motion to leave general session to enter into a public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Hearing first and second, any comments? Hearing no comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? We are now in public hearing. Please give your name and address, please.
Sam Burden with Bowler Engineering, 17 Computer Drive West, Albany, New York, 12205. Here tonight to continue the discussion about our proposed quick serve restaurant with drive-through development located at 2220 Downer Street. The applicant, Hazza Foods LLC, is looking to, just as a recap from our last meeting, develop the site with a 2024 square foot quick serve restaurant. Site was recently self-divided, we're right around the one acre mark adjacent the existing Taco Bell. Quick serve restaurant isn't allowed use, subject to site plan review and the drive-through subject to specialty use permit. The existing site is a former 84 lumber, site has previously been demolished, redeveloped with a Taco Bell, and now hopefully the quick serve restaurant development. Since our last meeting, when we spoke, just want to give you some updates on the progress we've made. Received engineering comments, minor engineering comments on the stormwater for the site. Received county, Onondaga County DOT comments. We're addressing those comments with our traffic engineer. We've received a sign-off from SHIP-O, let her no effect from them. We're waiting on the remainder of the county planning board comments at this time. We haven't got those, I don't know if those have come in as recently.
No, the meeting's tomorrow.
Got it. Okay. Working closely with Onondaga County Water and Sewer. They have no plan comments at this time. They let us know that they're a little bit understaffed and they're working to get us our final sign-off. We ran into that before. We were told that there was no chief, no plan comments from the fire department as well, from the fire chief. Our next steps, just a little bit of what we're looking to do, is hopefully submit a full revised package addressing the planning board's comments from the first meeting, Jason's comments, the county comments, when we receive everything, to have a total package that answers all the questions. With that, we would probably, if we have the permits for water and sewer, we would submit those as some sort of will serve that we could provide. Continue with our utility requests for electric and gas, and hopefully we can help answer any questions here tonight. I'd like to close the public hearing, I don't know if we'll be able to without the remainder of the county comments, but if possible, and then continue any further discussion with you.
Can you just, for the purpose of the public, could you just go through the circulation pattern and the shared driveway and everything? But I'm going to have a general.
Yeah, this one might be tough to see. So, we received preliminary feedback from Ring 3 DOT and from Onondaga County DOT. There's a jurisdictional boundary right at the front of our site, and what we did is they said that they would like to see no new accesses on Downer Street. We were able to talk to the adjacent landowner and work out a shared access agreement to get shared access onto Art, onto Downer Street. Two-way circulation across the front of the site. If you remember, we removed the parking spaces at the front from our pre-application meeting. We have 25 parking spaces, that includes two handicap spaces, three mobile pickup spaces, and three delivery spaces. We have an eight-car stack for the drive-through and a bypass lane for emergency vehicle or if somebody queuing here needs to get out of the drive-through. It's a drive-through centered layout, that's the main business for the proposed quick serve restaurant.
Okay, thank you. So, knowing being that we're in the public hearing, I just want to open up for any comment from the public. Is there anybody in the public want to speak for or against this application? Is there anyone in the audience that want to speak for or against this application? Okay. Hearing no comments, chair entertain a motion to close. So, I guess I leave this up to you. So, if we close this public hearing, that leaves a 60-day period to get approvals. Shouldn't be a problem? I guess I want to leave that to you, knowing that you haven't received all the comments from county planning yet, and if you think you can get that done. I have no problem leaving it open.
The, we can, we could leave it open. My concern, you know, we received the DOT comments, that was the one we were really, you know, more concerned about as compared to county planning. We don't see them coming back with a positive recommendation for, you know, further action, but I think we'd also be comfortable closing it, well, now that I think about it, because I don't, unless the board sees any outstanding items that they would like to discuss further, that wouldn't.
There's, there's a slight issue of amended site plan approval for Taco Bell.
There is, yeah. There was amended site plan. Sorry.
So again, if you feel like you can get it done, then...
That's a separate, that would be a separate.
That's a separate.
That would be a separate item, we wouldn't need that for the, we wouldn't need a public hearing for that. It would only be what's being done for this site plan, so, okay?
We did, we did submit this site plan amendment as well, just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Chair entertain a motion to close the public hearing for Hazza Foods, 2220 Downer Street, tax map ID number 033.1-04-02.2.
So move.
Sorry.
Hearing first and second, any comments? Hearing no comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Close. Chair entertain a motion to enter back into general session. Hearing first and second, any comments? Hearing no comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Hearing. So the next on the agenda is Hazza Foods, 2220 Downer Street, tax map ID number 033.1-04-02.2. We are in general session, can you please give your name and address again?
Sam Burden, Bowler Engineering, 17 Computer Drive West, Albany, New York, 12205.
Okay, so, as Jim was mentioning, yeah, so the separate task is the site plan amendment for the Taco Bell?
Yeah, so what we're doing is we're providing shared access for pedestrians as well, that is the addition of, mixed up here, a concrete sidewalk, a crosswalk, additional stop protection, relocation of a light pole, and a relocated light to provide a connection to the front door of the Taco Bell.
And you said the application was submitted?
It was submitted as part of the, the original. I think we submitted two site plans, we do that.
Go off, straight over, you can power it up. So, we can make a decision on the site plan amendment at this point, because there's no reason for a public, we don't need to have a public hearing or a county review on that. We won't be able to make a decision on the site plan, as you mentioned in the public hearing, because we don't have the county planning comments yet. Unfortunately, their meetings don't coincide with ours all the time, so we got, unfortunately, this is one of the months that it didn't, so they have their meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
Before we do that, do you anticipate needing to do any variances on signage or anything? Or you're not that far?
We're not that far. It's typical, our typical signage package right now, but it's something that we're taking into, just to make sure that...
So that'll be part of the bigger package, once you submit a full package?
Exactly, when we submit this, it's, you know, it would be almost construction-level documentation.
Board have any other questions in regards to either the Wendy's site plan or the site plan amendment for the Taco Bell?
For the addition of the Wendy's, in the traffic study provided, it discusses some potential backups with the 690 signal. Did county DOT comment on that at all?
They did, and they asked us to submit directly to DOT to make sure that our traffic study coincides with their data. We've reached out to Jeff Deep to work through those, nothing, we're not anticipating...
Because you're on the line.
Yeah, I mean, it's literally right here. We did find out that there are minor improvements that are being made, just based on foiling all their traffic plans, but nothing that's going to impact, impact our side of the interchange.
Thank you.
So the big, I guess the bigger thing is just that DOT looks at their timings once they make their final timing adjustments, which I believe is, that works, not going to be done till next year, right, Joe?
Correct, spring 2025.
What was that, spring?
Spring 2025, they're waiting for, they got the E-time on the poles. I know they're doing the foundations here, Hazza Lake.
Yeah, they, I think it's just to make sure everybody's talking, to make sure that, you know, with our proximity, yes, there is a buffer, but just to make sure everybody's involved in the conversation throughout the campaign here.
Any other questions at this point? We'll have another shot at the full package for the Wendy's, obviously when they sign a full package, once all comments are received, but at this point, is there any other items that they want to look at, the board would want them to look at? We can move forward, as I mentioned, we can move forward with the approval of the amended site plan, but we would need, is that something that we need your office to put together that resolution, or is that something we do at the board level? I apologize for asking.
Yeah, I, I, like you at the meeting, did not realize that we had the amended site plan application, so we haven't had a chance to look at it to prepare a resolution.
So we'll make that approval next month, too?
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, there's going to be no changes from that package to this package, it's, you know, the addition of minor concrete that was included in our stormwater made, made at the report.
Yep, so we'll add the approval of the site plan, amended site plan to next month.
You, you'll have a photo metric for the full package?
That's right, yeah.
Any other questions, comments at this time? All right, I think we're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
See you next month.
Safe travels back to Albany.
Always a fun one.
Yeah, I know.
Syracuse is playing tonight, so.
That's right.
Maybe I'll go the other way.
All right, next item on the agenda, TJ's Cannabis, 2239 Downer Street, tax map ID number 034.04-07. Someone here to speak for this application?
Yes.
Come up and give your name and address, please?
I'm Brian Matthews, architect representing the owner. My address is 1919 Patterson Road, Marriott and Neva, 13110. We were here last month and presented two renovation plans for addition and renovations to the existing Pizza Hut on Downer Street, and we had left that meeting with some, a couple of comments, I submitted some amendments, supplemental information to the board, emailed over the past couple of weeks. We have not yet seen some of those, and I can provide it for now, but we were asked to provide a traffic memo, which we did.
Yep.
We were asked to provide some noise level criteria for the generator that's proposed, and that we also provided.
You don't have that, do you, Matt?
Well, yeah.
Is it, is it not on that generator thing, that's with our generator piece of paper in that package?
No, this is a trip generation memo.
Want me to do some other stuff?
Thank you. So I guess one of the biggest items that was questioned, that was commented previously was the dumpster, like the location of that.
Right, I've been with that, so what we decided to do with that is to remove the dumpster enclosures entirely, and overlook that their needs for dumpster, and they are able to handle their waste disposal with totes, so they're going to keep the totes inside the building and bring them out on a weekly basis. So, one of the other issues that was raised last week, or last month, was the need for variance. This is an existing non-conforming lot, it does not meet the size 60,000 square foot requirement for the zone, and of course, primarily because of that, we don't meet the side yard setback, and we don't meet the rear yard setback. So, rear yard setback is 50 feet, we're looking for 10 feet. Existing side yard setback is four feet, and we're looking to extend that across the addition area. So we made application today, the zoning board, TBA, Act, and the, and the application we're submitting today.
Okay.
So I'd like to find out a little bit about that process in here, and what the next meeting is, if you're aware of that.
So, so with the application for variance, that'll be the next month's meeting?
Is it this board again?
Yeah, it will be this board that handles that. It will go through codes office, codes office will provide any comments initially. If they are good with it, then it'll become to this board, and since it's already been submitted, it'll be on next meeting's agenda.
Okay, can that be concurrent with a public hearing next month as well?
Yes, if, if all the information's been submitted, then yeah, there shouldn't be any issue with that, because they will require a public hearing also, so.
We got, be, be standard.
To my knowledge, you submitted everything that's been requested, so if something outstanding, please, you know, if you have a question?
You mentioned lot coverage, can you just go through the numbers again? Kind of my glasses aren't, so I'm struggling.
Yes.
That's right. So with the addition, what you told us?
There's a chart in the back that's much larger. Second page.
Oh yeah, that's much larger.
So, lot size, minimum, code minimum 60,000 square feet, existing lot is 17,500 square feet, and minimum lot dimensions by code, 200 feet wide, 250 feet deep, or at 100 feet wide, 117 by 1. So those conditions cause us to exceed the maximum lot coverage of 40%. We are at 75.6% now, with impervious area, and that's what we'll be at after the addition, because we're just converting, converting current impervious area parking lot to addition space. So, front yard setback, minimum 50 feet, the existing is 70 feet, we're not changing that, so that's existing, I think, one condition. Side yards, 50 feet total, 25 per minimum. Currently, we are at 69.7 feet and 4.1 feet, and we are proposing to be 54.5 feet and 4.1. So we meet the side yard setback combined between the two sides, but we do not meet it on the east side, Downer Street. Rear yard setback, 50 foot minimum, existence 38 feet, we're proposing 9.8 feet with the addition. So if those setbacks and lot coverages areas were considered relative to a 200-foot wide and 200-foot deep lot, then we would comply with those conditions, but the lot is undersized, so we are encroaching on those setbacks.
Got it.
Building height with 5, 40 foot maximum, we're only at, we'll be at 18 feet.
So six variances?
Twelve, it's existing non-conforming lot, but two variances. Rear yard setback and side yard setback.
So you went from 38 to 10, huh?
Correct. Again, if that, the only alternative would be to build on the front of the building at the Downer Street side, where we have 20 feet or so available to us before we reach that setback, but it's our goal to kind of turn the circulation around and enter from the parking lot side. And I think that works better for overall site circulation, existing and proposed. If we were to expand towards the bank, where we have available setback, we would take away parking that that next-door neighbor uses and shares parking on our property. Likewise, we share parking on the other side, where we're looking for that 4 foot setback. So it's a situation where the lot limitations, as they were originally defined, restrict the use and the ability to meet those setbacks.
Which generator are you going to be using here?
They're all relatively the same decimal levels. I think we're 16KW, if that's what our options are. Of all the generator sizes, they, they range exercise DVA from 55 to 57, they're all within the same area. 18KW. So maximum noise level at normal operating mode is 67W, which we require.
And I assume you would run the exercise mode during the daytime?
Yeah, we can schedule that.
Just to kind of go back to the variances, in preparation for next month's meeting, there's an area variance criteria that's set up by the state that needs to be met, there's the five, oh, six, no, five, five criteria bullets, do you have those, a copy of those?
I do know what they are, but I'm not ready to say.
That's fine, I was just going to say, if you need a copy of it, the codes office will have a copy, but I would just be prepared to answer, have answers to those ahead of next month's meeting. Last, last meeting also, we talked about hours of operation, obviously that's outside of this board's.
So, correct, we did talk about that, and the owner will work within the confines of the current zoning approved hours of operation, which are 9 a.m. to 6 p.m.
Okay, thank you.
Do you, are we avoiding a parking, number of parking spots variance, because you have shared parking for mine?
Correct, we have deeded access to shared parking to the neighboring boxes, and there's ample parking.
Oh, it's deeded?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. You anticipate any need for variance for signage, or are you not that far yet?
We're not that far yet, but I don't anticipate any, there's some state restrictions about the number of signs we can have, and the plan currently is to work within the confines of the current local zoning group, but we haven't gotten that part yet, and signage is not part of our application.
Any other questions at this time? Are you going to bring a lighting plan?
We can.
I don't see one.
There is not one, we don't have a metric yet, but there's a lot of ambient light assets set as it stands today, we do a couple of building wall packs, for something on the lighting and, and highlight entrances, but.
I just didn't need to show my new drawings, that's all.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Chair entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for site plan and area variances for TJ's Cannabis, 2239 Downer Street, tax map ID 034.04-07.04.
Test of December.
December 10th, 2024. End of motion.
So move.
Second.
Hearing first and second, any comments? Hearing no comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Scheduled, so we'll see you next month.
There's support, or the town have the notifications to neighbors on variety application?
I believe we don't, I don't think we do, I don't think we do. I think that's the applicant.
Do you advise with the property owners, within specified distance, or list to the owners?
Darkness.
Yeah, we could, I would go to the codes office and see what information they can provide, I don't know, Tim?
I think that codes office used to do that, yeah.
I think so, too.
Yeah.
So, just meet with the codes office, and they can get you the information. We will obviously advertise the public hearing in general, ahead of it, I think it's five days that we have to have it advertised, so that will be taken care of.
Okay.
All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, Crown Castle, T-Mobile, 2380 Ellsworth, tax map ID number This is for an amended site plan. Is there anybody here to speak for that? No? Okay. So this applicant's out of the country, they're located in Canada, though there are local offices throughout the country. What they're looking to do is amend an original site plan that allowed for the construction and development of this cell tower, which is relatively, is right in between East Sorvo Road and 690. They have, as you can see in the site plan, there's several proposed modifications to the ground facility. to the ground facility, which still falls within the general pad and fencing that's out there. The big question is, there's a large generac, generator. There was a question regarding the noise that that puts out. I believe we haven't received or heard anything regards to. You know, being that this is a amended site plan, there's nothing that needs to be done through the county or a public hearing. There's adjustments to the aerial facility also, which I've shown on C two point one. And the ground improvements are shown on C one point three. Claude and I were talking earlier that similar to solar development, there's an opportunity to send this out for review from a different consultant, but that obviously takes time. And this is something that we're looking to, the applicant is looking to, obviously get through as soon as possible. I guess we have to look at this as a board and see if there's any comfort level of getting an approval without an applicant being here and what you see in the site plans per your reviews. So I guess I.
We're raising the monopole twenty feet plus a few more inches beyond twenty feet. And I know that usually requires FAA approval. Is the sign off from that they're not concerned? And they didn't see that anywhere in the package?
No, that was not included. Have we received any other? Any other questions, comments, information from the applicant post our last Wednesday?
What was your question?
Have we received any other additional information from the applicant since last Wednesday?
No. We didn't ask them for anything further, so they didn't submit anything further. I mean, the file is pretty thick with everything that's been sent in. And for the board's purpose, this applicant filed their application in April. So they've been here for a really long time, being very patient with the turnovers in that office. Maybe you might be able to speak to it. She's saying something that if you submit an application and you don't hear something after sixty days, it's kind of already approved and granted. So she's really kind of hanging her hat on that law. So we're really trying to review everything as quickly as possible and make sure our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted so they can move this along.
She said.
These usually apply when there's a, when there's a public hearing, but there's no public hearing required. And I don't know that if there's still some questions that haven't been responded to, the question is whether or not the applicant is considered complete if they haven't provided documentation as to the height and whether the FAA is approved and stuff like that.
So unfortunately, yeah, we just came up with these comments that has to wait.
Yeah, I think it was in their cover letter. She provided a huge letter in October, you know, selling out the law. I was just looking forward to see if it was on. On your email, so I can pull it up.
Well, I'd like them to answer that question about the FAA sign off. I mean, that's due diligence.
Just for everybody, there's also a structural modification report within the package that's in front of you. And there's also a mount analysis passing, or a mount analysis conditional passing report. This is outside of my expertise as an engineer. So, Jason, it's outside yours, too.
We're just in education.
Yep.
Mark, it's my understanding in other cell tower situations like this, a co-location is very simple. You can't have the tower list any more than five percent either way. And they, they provide that analysis, the structural analysis. The only comment I would have is if there's anything that is demolished already in other cell sites that they've retired stuff in place and just left the wires there, have them remove that, that would be a requirement. Remove old pads, remove old cable trays coming out of the buildings. I think it's East Sorrel that was the one cell tower that the building is starting to collapse or working with another public communication company on that one.
And this isn't this site?
No. Okay, I'm sorry. But I'm on a word about the FAA, to be honest with you.
I know when they did the one on O'Brien Road, the FAA had to sign off on that one. And I would assume that's probably standard procedure. If it's not, they should know and they can tell us.
Certain height requirements.
Right, you're correct. And being on Sorrel Hill, this one's up quite a ways to begin with.
Correct.
So the options, I believe, in front of us at this point is this gets pushed to December, and we get responses, or we approve this on a conditional basis with the conditions that are put here in front of us in regards to the height requirement. FAA approval, sound levels, noise levels from the generator, from the proposed generator, and the comment regards to the removal of demolished equipment, cabinets, slabs, and anything, cables, wire, and all that stuff. So I guess I'm kind of looking at the rest of the board here on their comfort level of moving this forward or wait until we hear more information.
Well, I think it's pretty much standard what they're doing. I don't think this is anything that's unique by any stretch of imagination. But if we can get those basic questions, due diligence questions answered, I'd be good, you know, a contingency plan.
I just flew in this evening, so I hadn't had a chance to review it. So I'll go along with the board, but I mean, if they're just raising the monopole, the towers are fixed height anyways, so I don't see how there's an issue here, with the exception, my concern is that generator.
Your suggestion.
Do you chair my team, is it going to get on the phone or?
If you think she can have these answers, I'm not sure she'll have them right off the bat. I mean, we can try to get her on the phone after the meeting, if you want.
Okay, or you can move on to the next one, and I'll see what I can do.
Let's do that. Let's move all of this, let's flip this to the end of the agenda and see if we can get any answers ahead of this.
Just out of curiosity, do they know they were on the agenda tonight?
Yes.
And they just didn't show?
They're in Canada.
They're in Canada. We knew Wednesday that there was a pretty good chance that they were not going to have a representation at this point.
So seventy, zoom. Seventy decimal generator. The generac R D oh forty-eight. Seventy decimals that operate.
So it's our code, a hundred?
It's the first time.
Right at the.
So they're right on.
First time. Why is it now, all of a sudden?
Sixty-five and nine, seventy-four.
Paint the property, you're on show, right?
Paint the property.
They're way, way, way from the property line and any residential.
They're on the back pasture or something.
I mean, the tower's already built, they're just raising it. Yeah, I know. So simple, why?
Could you zoom? Zoom or two?
Yeah, it would have been easy.
So we move into the next one?
Yeah, sorry, I'm just looking something up here.
Sorry, be patient there.
All right, we're gonna hold that for, we'll move this to the end of the agenda. Not before we have everybody up here. All right. The next agenda item is Michael Allen subdivision, seven-six-five-three and seven-six-six-three, East Sorrel Hill Road, tax map ID, oh-three-two dot dash oh-four dash oh-one and oh-three-two dot dash oh-four dash oh-one. Is there someone here to speak on this application? Dan, you're gonna be up before you know it. We're on the roll here. Well, just for the, just for the boards, this is a subdivision. We have a couple of questions in regards to clarifications on the subdivision, what's needed. There's a driveway that spans both of the lots. So there's gonna be, we need some clarification on that driveway plus the pin, assuming former property lines that are fall within the lot two and lot one around that driveway.
This is one lot now, and this is lot two. And now they're making lot one and lot two. I looked it up today.
Oh, did you?
Yeah. I talked to the surveyor, and they're gonna eliminate that smaller parcel, probably subdivision.
Gotcha.
Remind us of that.
Yep. Okay. The lot one was the former, that front little piece, and the lot two was the bigger one. Now they're gonna split the small lot and bring it in, too. So I would guess, I would ask our town attorney, what's the, what's the thought of calling for a public hearing next month to move forward with this? Hoping that an applicant comes next month, and we'll get ahold of, obviously, the applicant and tell them the needs to be here for that? Or should we just hold off and wait until?
I mean, you can't, I mean, the question is, are you satisfied enough with the, with the site plan the way it is? You're gonna have to sit at the county planning. Let's leave this one to the county.
This, this will not need, because it's a two, it's a two lot subdivision.
And it's not on County Road.
Right.
I was thinking this was on the County Road. So if you're satisfied enough that you don't think that there's going to need to be any changes in it that would require, that would modify the need for the public hearing, because that's the way it is. But I mean, you can, you can schedule it and hope that they're here, or you can wait.
I mean, we'll obviously reach out to the applicant tomorrow.
East Sorrel is on County Road.
It is?
So then it's going to the county.
It's still a simple subdivision, you need to go.
I believe that if it's still on.
I thought there's new rules about that.
Well, there is for a simple subdivision, but I think because it's on County Road, though, it still would need to go to.
I will look at that, because I don't remember how many of them come.
Okay, we're gonna hold off. Do you want anything of this? The questions on your agenda?
Do you not know why they split the driveway?
Well, because that used to be one lot before.
Okay, well, yeah, I know. I mean, they're drawing the lot line, they could have, you know, drew it and excluded the driveway.
I think, I think that driveway is gonna come out, so the one lot is not gonna be build, a buildable lot based on what I read in the application. So you have the lot, one that has a house on it, lot two now, might be one, I don't know.
But they're saying it's not a buildable lot now, but sizing it to make it.
Correct, right. Yeah, I mean, it's ultimately, so, I mean, if this, they're gonna have to go to, they're gonna have to go to county for a driveway cut if they eliminate that driveway.
I think to your point, I can't see any reason they couldn't have scooched down.
Yeah, why not move the lot line instead of, you know, if you're gonna have a cross easement, what are they gonna do here?
Yeah, I would say they'd have to fix that driveway so it won't access this lot, one or two, whatever the top lot is there. All right, we're gonna hold that to next month. Well, we ain't seen nothing yet.
Swallow stuff to next month.
So I think the review from the county wouldn't be county planning, it would be just county D O T review.
Right? Yeah.
Yeah, that's just a letter.
And that's just a letter, right. And that's up to the applicant to get that review, take care of. We would refer this to county planning, because it is a minor subdivision. I had that in my notes. All right. Next item on the agenda, Eldon Homes, Downer Street, tax map ID, oh-three-six dot dash oh-three dash two-one dot zero. This is for a zone chain request. Dan, can you give your name and address, please?
Sure, my name is Dan Barnabat, and the owner of Eldon Homes, and the applicant on this matter. My address is seven-eight fifty-four, St. Hill Road, Upper Cool, three oh nine. I submitted some more materials at the board's request in our last meeting. There are two concept plans, both depicting, I believe, the same number of lots. One concept plan shows a layout of. I don't have any, I dropped.
Here, let's put one up on the, can you take mine and put them up on the.
We're sharing one here, so.
Standard layout.
Yes.
Okay, just kidding. Two of the same plan. Maybe not. So what this plan shows, the first plan, is a twenty-five lot layout with the conventional dimensions in R fifteen zone regs. So a minimum lot width of ninety feet, a minimum lot size of fifteen thousand square feet. And then, I can't remember if there's a lot depth requirement in the ordinance, but I'm sure this meets the lot depth requirements and the building, the front yard setback requirements for the lot. So if zone change to R fifteen were granted, this is a conventional layout. The second plan, which I can go to, but I should have some questions on this, gives you an example of things that we can go into consideration to modify the layouts. That's the second request I have before this board. If this is gonna get referred to the town board for the zone change, I'd also ask the board to make a positive recommendation for the use of clustering. We haven't set our sites on a final lot layout, but the clustering will give us some flexibility on the shapes and the sizes of the lots, which may allow us to make them perhaps a little narrower, may give us a little bit of flexibility as far as where the road cut is onto Downer Street or Comain Road. And it may give us a little bit of flexibility on the depth of the lots, either the lots that back up to Downer Street or the lots that back up to Comain here. So typically with a clustering request, we will ask for some pre-approved deviation from the regs. Those deviations could be the lot widths, so they don't have to be ninety feet minimum, they can be narrower. And they could also be to the lot size. They don't have to be fifteen thousand square feet, they could be smaller. But what we will respect. But what we will respect is that there will be no more lots than what is currently allowed under R15. So you add up the same number of lots, just slightly different sizes.
So you're really only, I mean, you're really just dropping this down like by a couple feet here and there to get into the clustering for widths and depths?
We still have some things to investigate. One of the things I wanted to do is maybe provide some, uh, as much relief as possible to land here, but we're gonna be constrained, I believe, by how far the intersection off of Comain Road has to be from the corner.
With widths.
So there's a concern that I can't be too close to that corner, but can't necessarily be too far from the corner, or we lose that, that one lot. And we could, we could modulate the road a little bit to bring it in one direction and the other, but necessarily have to be a straight shot. And that could give us an opportunity to start further away from the Comain Road intersection, and then bring the road a little closer to Downer. To be honest, your highway department may have something to say about that, or your engineering review, because they don't necessarily like a, a road that weaves, because it's a little more challenging to plow, with damage yards and nailboxes, perhaps.
So, so what do you think the, what do you see as the advantaging of doing the clustering? Because it, just kind of putting it out on the table, I like the other one better, and for two reasons. I like the uniformity of the lots on that, and I like the fact that that second curb cut is further away from Comain. But obviously, there's some advantage, at least, you're taking some advantage to doing the cluster.
I, I can't say what our ultimate plan will be, because we'll spend quite a bit of time, um, looking them over. I can tell you, from a marketing point of view, we don't like uniformity of lots, because we like a variety of lots, because they may have a variety of market appeal, and these lots back here would probably have a lot of appeal if they're considerably bigger. Same number of lots, but allows us to sell a variety of homes. If somebody who wants the biggest house on the street here wants the biggest lot, they've got a place to put that person. So we can try to modulate it a little bit for, for market purposes. But, but again, my intention was design. Another thing with something like this, it just might be slightly less road we have to put in, slightly less road the town's gonna have to maintain in perpetuity. So, so these are all thoughts as we put them together. We look at the cost of putting the subdivision in, the market value of what we created, and any other, uh, relief that we can create.
But, I mean, you don't think that you'll be able to do the green bumper zone anymore because of that constriction of where this road would need to be away from the entrance to Comain?
I have to see what, what your regs really require. Is it a recommendation, is it a mandate? The county have something to say about that? And, um, despite the fact that the lots don't look that deep, but that's still pretty deep by today's standards. We have communities where the lots are only 100 to 135 feet deep, so that depth, uh, still will allow us to save a lot of trees back there, provided I don't have to, another consideration is stormwater and where I may have to put a swale, because the swales could disrupt a lot of the vegetation.
It's kind of what I was thinking, like, I, I, I live in the neighborhood. I don't see that the green zone as being this great benefit, because it's a fairly dense, uh, neighborhood as it is. I, neighbors that live right behind there could think totally different from what I'm thinking, obviously.
They usually do.
Usually do, yeah. But I, I just don't know that you'll get a very substantial green space or in there the way it's laid out right, right now.
I don't, I, I'm just asking for the tool in my toolbox. The design flexibility is nice, don't know how much I'll need it, if I'll need it at all, but it's nice if we get to the next stage. We're not asking to bring more lots, we're just asking for some flexibility where we might need it, if, if we decide to.
And these are the ones you decided is only gonna be single-family?
Uh, this would be R15, so, but you were talking two-family at previous meetings on some of them. So I was, I was giving you some insight as to some product that I'm exploring in other areas, and yours, your, your current R15s, definitely allows the construction of two-family homes.
Okay, well, I'd like the wider lots if there're gonna be any two-family in here. It's just, you know, you're gonna have double the cars.
So, so one thing I'll allude to is that you get that, you, we can honor that request when we get to the next stage. In other words, there's still a, even if clustering is allowed, even if the zone change goes through, I still have to come back for this board for a subdivision approval, and you could put, we could put a caveat in the subdivision that homes that may be built with two-family in mind have to be one, uh, lot widths have to be wider. Uh, that's not uncommon in other towns, uh, the lot sizes and the lot widths are wider. Uh, they differentiate between the single-family and the two-family lots. So I'd be willing to, I'd be willing to agree to something like that at the subdivision stage. Perhaps, what we could perhaps do is just, you know, um, I, I may, I may not decide to build the two families. In this case, I may not have the wider lots, or I may have the wider lots but not put two families on them, and that could be something that could be, uh, enforced at the building permit stage. The lots now widen up to accommodate the two-family, uh, that we breed on in the site plan approval or the preliminary plan approval, then, then we'll accommodate the two-family.
Is there an easement going through this?
It's kind of been- I think there's a, I think there's an overhead wire easement, and another reason, by the way, we need the clustering, because there's a possibility where we have to do some type of accordion around that easement. Yeah, I think it bisects the, I think it bisects-
21 and 5, possibly?
If it's an older power line easement, it's probably 20 feet, if it's a little newer, it might be 30 feet.
It just looks like a wide clearing, that's a reason I-
Yeah, the, the, the whole homes in Harbor Heights are serviced by overhead power, and I think to this day, some of the power lines are in the back there.
They are, they're in the back there.
Is there an advantage or disadvantage to adding narrower frontage on the street? You know, I see on the, on the scheme here, picture lots are 67.
So the way the tip, the, the way the typical building code reads of that subdivision regs are, is they, it can be narrow at the front, and we try to be mindful of the arvia and how the driveway will go on there, but at the building line, so you go back to where that gash line is, they have to meet the lot width requirement of your, of your ordinance. So they can be narrow at front, but if they're required to be 8 feet or 90 feet wide, they have to be at least that wide at the building line. Hope I explained that correctly. And, uh, you know, again, I'm sort of showing you what we were able to accomplish by density on the R15 plans. The cluster wouldn't get us any more lots than that, but we may, it's not uncommon for us to lose a lot or two during the, during the next stage, because, because of something like an easement or something. If I end up with a, if I end up with a bisected property right here, and I can only get so many lots here, so many lots here, I may, I may lose a lot or two.
Okay. So, we don't get a lot of application, so this is a zone, zone change application to R15, and, and I've been on the board a while, and I just, we don't get a lot of applications of with clustering, right?
Uh, yeah, I don't know that you've ever done. I mean, it's not-
We've done it once.
I mean, it's, it's very similar to P U D, I suppose. The idea is that, with the P U D, there's, the process is a little different, and we're gonna go through that on the other two pieces, but, uh, this one is, a P U D was not into consideration because of the, the way your ordinance is written.
So what I'm, what I'm asking, and I don't even know who I'm asking, I don't know if I'm asking your attorney here, or you, the applicant, but if we, if we make the recommendation back to the town board of a zone change to R15 with clustering, what, does that handcuff us at all as far as being able to still work with and, and get lot sizes and depths where we want them also? It doesn't mean that you can just wholesale keep the same number of lots and squeeze some down to, you know, 70 or 65 foot frontages, and others are wider. What kind of attitude does that give you, and what, what does it take away from us? I guess is the question.
If I answer. So, what we're doing at this stage is, I'm asking for a recommendation for the zone change, that's the first recommendation, and a recommendation to allow me to use clustering. The way your ordinance reads, the town board has to give you the authority to use clustering. So I go to the town board, they say clustering is appropriate, or it's not appropriate, it comes back to you, and then we negotiate, or it's iterative, you say, I'd like to see this, I say I'd like to see that. In the end, when the plan is, becomes a filed map, there's a, there's a stamp on the plan, and we list all the pre-approved deviations from your R15 ordinance. It could be lot size, it could be lot width. So you, so the answer to your question is yes, you still have control over what, what's ultimately approved, or what the clustering allows me to do, but we can't get to that point without the town board's approval.
Yeah, understood. Is that-
Right, so right now, you're looking at the zone change, and then once the zone change is approved, or not approved, or whatever, the next step is to come back to you with a subdivision request. Um, and then in the subdivision request, they would ask for, um, the lots with the, with the widths that they want, and then again, if, if it's, if it's two-family and you want a wider lot there, you can go back and forth as to what, uh, specific allowances you want for each individual lot.
So it really is P U D, you know, it really brings it to that almost.
Pretty much.
Yeah. I, I guess the, yeah, pretty close. Probably, it's probably why, because I looked over at other major subdivisions the last 20 years, we just, we just went P U D.
Other than it, it does kind of restrict you to what, the number of lots that you would've gotten under the original zone.
That's an interesting point, yes. So with the clustering, your regs make it very clear, once it's zone R15, you can't have any more lots than would traditionally fit under the R15 zone.
Right. Okay.
So if we adopted the clustering a lot of years ago now, the advantage to town clustering is that, in theory, there's gonna be less infrastructure costs to maintain going forward. You condense, you, you do a master plan like this, and then everything gets condensed so that you lose a third of your road length, and your sewer length, and your, your stormwater. Whether his plan can do that or not, that's the goal of the clustering versus the P U D, which gives use options.
You also try to strike for greater space as well.
Exactly, and that's, and that's the, the trade-off for the residences, there's more space and more undeveloped area.
Obviously, this is, on one hand, there's many opportunities, but on the other hand, every little opportunity might be helpful as I'm designing the final layout.
Kind of.
And, and we haven't even figured out, you know, the stormwater at this point. You know, once, once we get the zone change, we have to do things like investigate the topography a little bit better, figure out where all the sewer connections, we, we know where they are, but their actual elevations, making sure that we get all the sewers to go where it needs to go.
No, it's a good explanation, because we don't, I, I haven't seen any of the clustering applications yet, so.
It's, if, if the town hasn't done it before, it's a learning curve, like we've done it a half dozen times in our business, and, uh, it's, it's pretty similar, uh, from town to town, because it, it all, your, your reg is, uh, comes from the town and law reg, it's state law. They all emanate from that. Again, we could be, we could be having, could have a P U D discussion, but the property's not big enough.
Are you doing clustering and clay on that project that I see on TV?
Not that one. That's because, do you want to give me their zone? That's R3, so the lots are a minimum of 5,000, like 4,000 square feet. So it's a throwback zoning from the Galeville and Eddym, Eddydale days, so we designed a product that fits on lots that are 50 by 100. So, yeah, we, we didn't need the clustering, there's a lot of- It's gonna be very small homes, very close together, not, not, not necessarily the kind of things we're asking for here, which, by the way, is another element of clustering, we can talk about setback, because apartments are side to side.
Any other questions? Comments? I guess open discussion among the board, I mean, obviously, the next step is to referral back to the town board, whether positive or negative. You have, you did submit an application for, to the R15, I just-
There was one original application, I created two, and I submitted a letter specific to just this one.
Yep.
The other one is on the back burner until I get through this, and then we'll go to that. Figure this, I can take advantage of that, maybe this is going, before we have to figure out where we're gonna be there.
Any concerns of the board?
R15's consistent, consistent with the neighborhood over there. I think this plan is a better product. Gives us a little bit more room to deal with, unfortunately, but I think it's a better product.
We don't wanna get into a place where we have called this out, so.
Yep.
And I think we already talked about that previously at other meetings, so. Roger, any concerns?
No, I, I agree, I think the clustering is the way to go.
Jesse? Jim? Jamie? Any concerns? Bud? All right. Chair entertaining a motion to make a positive recommendation back to the town board for a zone change from an R40 to an R15 with clustering. End of motion. Roy, sorry. I just wanna get this on. For Eldon Homes, Downer Street, tax map ID number 036 dot dash 03 dash 21 dot zero. Hearing first and second, any comments? Hearing no comments, all those in favor? Against? Carrie?
This is where I've been taught not to speak, but I have to ask the attorney a question. Did that make two motions, one for the zone change, one for clustering, so it goes to the town board, and they don't see fit to authorize the clustering, that they don't have to send it back, that they can authorize the zone change without the clustering?
No, I think it, it's fine, because they've asked for two, um, they've authorized both, and so either one with the town board can-
Thank you very much, appreciate your patience.
Thank you.
I was a little under the weather the last time, I didn't know.
Oh, I figured all eyes.
Can I hear my man?
Can I get a roll call vote, please? Just to put a- I am pointing.
Yes.
Mr. Virginia?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Chalitak?
Yes.
Mr. Biddash?
Yes.
It's official now. Okay, taking a step back to Crown Castle. Anything?
Um, she said under 200 feet, we'd need FAA approval, and she said she didn't have the generator spec sheets in front of her, but if that was the only thing, if you could do a conditional approval based on the noise needing the requirement.
Yeah, we've, we got, we actually got an answer from codes regarding that, and Jason's research to figure out what the decibel limit, so we're good there. I will, um, so the generator's good, the FAA's approval is set, so I guess the only thing, if we do approve this tonight, there'll be a condition in regards to the request of removal of all demolished equipment and cables, et cetera. It may be a little redundant, but could, can we make a condition of that the generator will meet the town ordinance for sound at the property line?
I can't find where it states what kind of batteries, is there a fire code if there are lithium that needs to be considered?
No, ma'am. That would be a building, building code, three hour rated walls, nothing on it.
Any other questions? Comments, conditions?
Uh, I just want the board to know, I'm gonna abstain since I haven't had a chance to review this, these plans. review this, these plans.
All right. Do we need to do a seaker for this?
It's amended, it's an amended site plan, so you can just reaffirm the seaker from the prior site plan.
Maybe Nadine said that network session, we didn't need that.
We didn't need it?
We didn't need additional...
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. Chair entertain a motion to reaffirm seaker from the previous site plan approvals. End of motion. What's the tax map number? Tax map, oh, I gotta move back up. Tax map 032 dot dash 06 dash 03 dot zero. So moved. Hearing first and second, any comments? Hearing no comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Approved. Chair entertain a motion to approve the site plan for Crown Castle, Team Mobile 2380 Ellsworth, tax map ID number 032 dot dash 06 dash 03 dot zero. Can you just give me the, just leave the map numbers? As shown on the site plans stamped by Patrick W. Marshall, professional engineer, dated...
318-24.
318-24, with previous revisions on March 7, 24, and July 3, 2023. With the conditions that the generator meet the town code for noise at the property lines, and the condition that all... That a condition that all demolished materials, equipment, cables, and wires, et cetera, be removed from the site following demolition. So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Guess I so moved it, so, sorry. Hearing first and second, any comments? Hearing no comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Carrie, it's approved. Chair entertain a mo, chair entertain a motion to close the zoning planning board November 12th, 2024 meeting. End of motion. Moved. Hearing first and second? Any comments? Hearing no comments, all those in favor? Against? Have a good evening, everyone.